Hello everyone and welcome to the Inflectra webinar, Spira 7.3 and actually Spira 7.2. So we've got two of them in here, not just one. This webinar is going to be starting in about one or two minutes. Just to allow the last minute stragglers to come in. So if you would like to get a coffee or something stronger, I would have said in the afternoon, something stronger, but some people in the mornings, whatever you'd like. Get your favorite beverage de jour, come join the webinar. We'll be starting in about one or two minutes. And the focus today is on Spira 7.2 and 7.3, the new features. Going to go through those, we'll take questions, we'll have this recorded, so we'll put it up online as well. And we do also have an afternoon version of this as well. So if someone can't make it because it's too early, please have them join the afternoon session. We'll be going through the exact same thing. For housekeeping, if you have any questions, please put them in the Q and A window of GoTo, not GoTo Meeting of Zoom. And I will be doing those at the end of the session. So I'll be going through the presentation, the application demo, and then we'll get to the Q and A. So I said, we're just going to wait a few more minutes to let people join. I think we have some people looking. Yeah, I'm going to start going ahead since I want to respect your time. So again, thanks for joining for today. Just to go through what we will be talking about today, we're going to be going through 7.3 of Spira and 7.2. We haven't done a webinar on new features since 7.1. So we're trying to do both together to wrap up the end of the year. We will be doing a lot of exciting things in the new year, particularly around scaled agile. And so there are going to be blogs and webinars next year, talking about those cool topics. This is like a recap of the things we've done this year. So 7.3 came out recently and inside of it, we have redesigned agile boards. Now those are in public beta. So when you see them, please play around with them and give us feedback. We'd love to hear your thoughts. We've already had some customers and partners give us feedback, which we will be incorporating into the versions coming up early next year. We've also added teams and track support. That's only in Spira plan and that's used on the boards, but it is actually a separate feature that we'll be using elsewhere in the application. We've also in version 7.2 added what we call product or project custom properties. And that's having custom fields or custom properties for products or projects. And in the future, we may be adding that to portfolios and other artifacts as well, but at the moment it's used in the project section. And the last thing, we also added a spreadsheet editor. As you know, we previously added a diagram editor, a rich text editor, a markdown editor, and a diagram editor. Well, just to round out the inline editing functionality, we've got a spreadsheet editor. And with that, you can now create simple spreadsheets, simple diagrams, text documents, all within Spira natively without needing to use an external application. Of course, they're versioned and linked to other artifacts in the system. So with that, that's the agenda. I'm going to go into the live application. Let's not spend too much time in PowerPoint and go over to here. Okay, so let me first of all, just log this or myself. Okay, so this is for those who know this is Spira plan right here. Some of the features are in Spira plan only. Some of the features are in Spira team and there are some in Spira test. This is Spira plan, so we can show everything. I will try and highlight what's in each of the product additions as we're going to make it clearer. So I'm going to actually go in reverse order. Let's get some of the older functionality out the way first. So in all three flavors of Spira, test team and plan, we have added in the document section, we've added a new type of artifact, a new type of document. We've had, as you can imagine, uploading documents, you can add links, you can put in screenshots, you can write markdown files, you can do rich text, you can do B G D feature files. You have diagram support. We have org charts, we have mind maps. All this stuff is existing. You've probably had hopefully played with it. If you haven't, please feel free to do so. Well, you also added a spreadsheet editor. Now, it is not Excel. It is not as powerful as Excel. It is not a replacement for Excel. It is a simple spreadsheet editor that can be used for basic spreadsheets that dated for data, for capturing information. So it's useful, can do form, basic formulas. So it's highly capable, but it is not a replacement for Excel or Google Sheets. So just to set expectations. So we'll do my simple sheet. I could use a type, make a functional spec, you can give it tags. I won't bother. Once you create that, it will take you into the spreadsheet editor. Like that. And it says please use Chrome or Edge and I didn't follow the advice. I'm using Firefox, so I'll be careful. Yeah, for best experience, please use Chrome or Edge, only because some of the shortcuts that the diagram editor use are the same ones that Firefox uses. But if I'm careful, it'll be fine. So I'm going to create a simple table. So let's say I've got my, you know, color. Maybe we'll have book name. We'll have favorite food. So not favorite, so favorite book. Oops, favorite color, something like that. Oops. I wanted to column. That's out of column. Yep. And it was to name, full name, sub screen, a simple spreadsheet. So Adam. That's why I usually use Chrome because sometimes it will, with Firefox, it will bring menus up. Fred and Joe. Favorite color is wearing a pink shirt. So pink. Fred is blue. Joe is green. Actually, let's do Martha. Purple. A book. I'm not going to follow the books. Our Hill of Two Cities. Tail not take. And you get the idea. So there's my spreadsheet going here. Oh, I want to bold it. Nice. Underline it. Great. And perhaps I also want to have some calculations. So I might do age. Oopsie, type in the cell first. There we go. Age. 12, 10, 10, 5, 20, 5 and 8. And you can then do simple calculations and things like that. So again, it's a simple spreadsheet editor is not meant to be a replacement for Excel. But we'll give you, let's have these two together like that. Stamped page. There you go. 17. So it can do simple calculations, simple formulas. You can do formatting, you can do fills. If I wanted to fill these, could do that. Pretty. You can do basic formatting here. You can do, you can change number formats. You can also validate the data, you can sort. You can change the format that I just showed you. You can also then do formulas as well. So it's a relatively good basic spreadsheet editor for if you want to do test data for testing or just capturing basic information, do financials. And all that is then available in Spira when you hit the save button. The good news is it is versioned, so you can make changes to it and every version will be saved. So if I go back here and I was to get rid of that formula, delete and hit save again, I've got another version. So I can now revert my versions. Like that. And of course, I can always link it to other parts of Spira. So I want to link the spreadsheet to, let's say, a requirement or a test case. Maybe this state is a test data. I could link that to a test case in my testing. And say, save. I've now linked that sheet to my test case. Could do the same thing for requirements. You can also view it as well as editing it. And there's also inline help available right here in the help section. You can insert columns and rows if you want to change things and you can also lock cells and clear. So, and of course, you can always import and export. So even though it is not Excel, it does have the ability to export as Excel or down as Excel. There you go. That's my spreadsheet. So again, a built in spreadsheet editor, basic formatting, basic formulas, rows, columns, and recommend, don't do what I did, using Chrome or Edge because it just works a little, it's the shortcut keys. Don't launch things in Spira's menu, which it does otherwise in Firefox. Great. So with that, that's our spreadsheet editor that we added. The next thing I want to talk about for 7.2 are the project custom properties. And this is a Spira plan only feature. So if you have test or team, you will need to upgrade to plan. So what you'll notice is if you've been familiar with Spira for a long time, inside a project or product, we've always had custom properties. And those are things you can apply to a requirement, you can add them to a test case and so on. What we also found was that when users create products or projects, they want to have the ability to categorize them. And so what you can do now is we have what are called system custom properties and these are at the system level. So they're down here in the system admin menu. And they are under the custom property section, which is new. And you can now have custom properties on products and then you can have custom lists. So if custom lists, these are like the custom list we had before in a, at the product, in the project level. But let's say we want to have a way of categorizing our projects in our system or products in our system in different ways. So maybe we want to add a list where we can categorize them for those doing life sciences. Maybe it's a gamble or not gamble. We have a yes, no list. So that's okay. But maybe we want to see, is it a, what technology stack is this project using? So maybe it's technologies. That could be a good example. And maybe we're going to add a value, we'll add, maybe this is a SAP application, maybe it's Oracle. Maybe it's Microsoft. Maybe it's a web project using Node JS. There we go. Like that. So we've defined some technologies. Now what we can do is go into our system product definitions and these are the custom fields on a project or product. So first of all, is it HIPAA compliant? Yes or no? We've got a text field where we want to describe how it's being validated. Is there a Sarbanes Oxley impact for a banking project? But also what technology we're using? Well, let's go ahead and now use our new one, technology. And it could be a single select list or a multi-select. I'll just do a single select. Hit save. And just like we'd have on our regular custom properties, we've now defined the custom properties. We've got lists that we can use, but the difference is if I now go into my program view, sample program. And I go to the artifact menu, you'll notice that there's a new entry. This wasn't here before. It's products. So I'm in a program and I want to look at the products in my program and you can see they're right here. Library information system, sample one, sample two, testing, these are some samples. If I choose a different program, like maybe I go into like aviation platform, I'll see my three products there, flight control system, flight planning, another sample. And you'll notice that all my fields are visible now. And I can show how different columns. I want to show the technology, high technology, show HIPAA, show not, show Socks. All these are visible. You can filter by these fields. And if I click on one, let's say flight control system, I can now use them to enter information. And there's two main use cases. One is you want to be able to categorize these products in a certain way. So on the grid, you can filter and see them all. So I might want to say, well, this is not life science. It's not HIPAA compliant. But there is a Sarbanes Oxley component here, maybe technology. It's a flight control system. We're using probably Microsoft technologies. We've also got a description, which is new. We've got a description. We've also got validation plan, you know, will be validated, validating using the airborne DO 1/8 to C, I think, I think it's 1/8 to C, the flight control, the aviation standard for safety. So you can do that. So basically this lets you do two things. It lets you categorize your products in different ways. You can slice and dice them. And you can do that by going back to the list page that we're on here. I can now filter to find all my Microsoft projects. There's only one and so on. Or the second thing it's really useful for is if you go into a particular product, and this is more for the tax fields, you can build out what we would call a product charter or a project charter, where we're defining all the information around a system. So for example, when you reset up with a product, you might want to know what's the escalation plan, who are the stakeholders, what are the constraints? Are there any legal things that we need to understand? All that meta information would previously live elsewhere. It could be a document. It could be in some other system, it could be in a spreadsheet. Now we can have it natively in Spira. So that way you can now have an authoritative place to store everything to do with a particular system. You can store this meta information, both things that you'd use to do program management or portfolio management, where you want to see all of your products and be able to slice and dice them in different ways, but also just to have that information be available on the product level. Things like these description fields, these rich text blocks, where you can describe the different key information that you need to capture. And so professional service firms might use it to capture things like client relationship managers, client engagement plans, team standards, stakeholders, all the things that would normally live in a spreadsheet or some document in a SharePoint folder somewhere. It can now be a living part of the system. So that's the product custom properties. It's custom fields on a product as opposed to custom fields on the artifacts in a product. Right now it's only for products. There are plans in the future to add it to programs, portfolios and potentially to users. So you'll be able to have things like skills and other meta information available to link to the track and link these different things together. But as again, as of right now, it is on the product level for product artifacts. Okay, so that's what was new in 7.2. Now in 7.3, which is the latest version, there's two main pieces of new functionality and they are interconnected. The first part, which is the more foundational piece, are the teams and tracks. So if we go into teams, you can now define a global set of teams or tracks. We call them teams now. So teams would be basically, they're almost like roles, but they're not roles. They're not security related. They're more function related and ways of grouping information. So you can define these different teams. I've defined a BA team, a dev team, PM and a QA, for example. And these teams are global, so that way they should be across the entire system. And they will then be applied to a particular project. So bear in mind, these are globally defined, but locally applied like a role. So what you'll do is go into a product and assign a user to a team on that product. So the list of teams is global, like a BA team on one product, another product, but you apply them locally. So once you've defined the teams like this, the next step, and just to mention, I should mention, by the way, if you don't see this functionality in your instance of Spira, that's because you haven't enabled the beta features. So this is considered a public beta feature. It's fully functional, fully available, same as the boards I'm going to show you, but we're still getting feedback on the features and they may change slightly. So that's why they're listed as beta and to for safety, we've given admins like you, hopefully, the choice of turning them on or off. So if you don't see this option, either if you're the admin, go into general settings and make sure you enable beta features. If you are not the admin, then you should ask your admin to go and do what I just said. So if you don't see, that's really important. Now, we've now defined a list of teams. We've got those four teams. How do we apply them to a product? Well, very easy. On the product level admin now, you notice we've got product membership. That's the security membership. Are you a developer tester? What permissions do you have? Team membership is underneath and that lets you assign a user like Fred is now in the QA team. Martha's in the BA team. Joe's in the BA team. Jack's in the dev team and so on. So we've assigned these different users to the different teams on the product. As of right now, this is only being used in the boards. However, in the future, we intend to make this more widely available in the system as well. Okay, now when it comes to the boards, we have, the beta functionality is only available currently in the planning board. That's the main planning board. That's the board that's oriented around requirements and requirement types like stories, features, epics. It is not yet released onto the requirements only board. It is also not on the defect board, incident board, and is not on the task board. So this new user interface is on the main planning board only. It handles primarily requirements, but you can also see incidents on them as well. After this beta, we are taking feedback and we intend to be rolling out the new design of board to the tasks, requirements and incidents as well. So this will become the new board everywhere, but before we do that, we want to make sure we get all the feedback. We've already had some really good feedback in and there is functionality that will be changing, will be changing, addition, adding functionality primarily. Change some of the views and things just to make it, just to improve usability. So that once we've got it the way we want it, we'll then be rolling it out to all the other boards as well. Okay, so with that being said, if you go to planning board, this is the new board and I was doing a demo earlier. So I'm just going to reset myself back for a second. So let me close everything. Okay, so the new planning board is similar to the old one, but has a lot more functionality and flexibility. And we've tried to make it, make it cover more use cases. So the first thing you'll notice is there are now these three views. Product backlog, release backlog, sprint backlog. Now, the intention of these are, the product backlog is when you're basically looking at all the features and requirements and stories and other work item types. And I'm going to use the word requirement from now on, but it could be a backlog item, user story, feature epic, all of those. So that all the requirements, these are the ones that we've not yet decided that we're going to do. So these are things we could do that basically the wish list, the ideas, they go into the product backlog, they will get prioritized, they get what's called grooming. They get sorted out, figuring out which are the most important ones. But we haven't yet decided we're going to do any of them and we haven't said which version they're in, which release, which sprint or which schedule, which person. That's the backlog, the product backlog. Then we have the release backlog and that's when we're going to take things from the product backlog that we think are high priority or important. And we're now going to decide when we're going to do them. We're going to put them into a release. We might assign to people already, but certainly we'll decide what release they're going to be in and we may reprioritize them. And then from there, we'll then have the sprint backlog where we'll look at, we've got all this functionality assigned to a release or which sprint are we doing it in if we're doing scrum. If we're doing a Kanban, we probably won't have sprints, we'll only have releases and statuses. And then we were certainly in both cases, they want to see who's doing the work. So in both the release and the sprint views, you can always see who's been assigned to, and that can then be grouped by team. Okay, so let's start off with the product backlog. Oh, and one other thing, you'll notice here, we've got these three selectors. We've standardized this to make it much easier. The old board was a bit wonky and that you could go vertical, horizontal. Now we've got three standard elements. You can group by something. That's like the main board. That's how many boards we have. Because you can have multiple boards effectively. And in each side of each board, I can choose what is my column and what is my row. And depending on the view I've got, what's available in these other options will vary. There's less options typically available in the product backlog because at that point we don't have any releases. We don't have things assigned to people yet. So those options are hidden. Once we go into the release and sprint backlogs, you'll see more options. The other thing we've done is we've given more customization options on the cards. Previously, the cards were detail view, not detail view, show incidents, show tasks, show test cases. And that was pretty much it. So we've redesigned the card layout. We've also given you more flexibility as to what's available. All right. And lastly, if you, because this is a public beta, please give us feedback. This explains how it works. It also shows how you can give us feedback. So let's have a look at how it works though. So let's go ahead and first, we're now looking at the product backlog. We're grouping by component. We've got the status of the column. We've got no rows. So these are my grouping grouped elements and I've got three groups. I've got the administration component, the author management and the book management. And those come from the components that are edited right here in the administration for this product. If I expand, let's say, author management, I can expand it and I can see all the items in it and there aren't any. I can go to administration and luckily there are some items in it that would be very boring. You can see all the items are here. And you can see this is a story card. Now, because I've got everything turned on, sorry, not that one, everything turned on here. You're going to see the maximal, maximal information. If you would just cut the choices to no, you'll see less and less information progressively. So the things you're going to see on this particular card will be, now this doesn't have any test cases or tasks yet, so it's still relatively empty. But what you'll see will be the name is in bold. If you hover the mouse, you get a tooltip with the name, the folder structure of the requirement, which will basically be the feature story epic, a feature epic story, sorry. The type is a feature. You can see the status. So previously you couldn't see these on the card. Now you can. They're obviously in the tooltip as well. The description is listed. We truncate the description text to make it fit. The tool that gives you the full description. There's the ID of it, requirement 25. The icon means it's a requirement on a defect. And instead of having the yellow on the left hand side, it is now a yellow blob and that means it's a low priority. An orange blob is a medium priority. If we have it, we'll get to some other ones. When you see red blobs, it's probably critical or high. And blob is not a technical term. And then if you cover the mouse over the avatar, this is assigned to a person. So there is a person's name. If the person's not assigned to someone, that will be missing. And then lastly, we have turned on the option to see the stack order, which is, that's why I keep doing that right here, the stack order here. And that number is the position in that segment. So card one, two and three, these are the priorities. Now you can drag and drop them to move the order around like that. Easy peasy. And if I wanted to say, okay, well, this is requested, but I think we should review this one. And actually that's under review and maybe we should review this one too. So you can drag and drop and it will reload the board and put it in the right place. In common with the old board, if I click on the link, there's inline editing. You can edit all the fields. It follows the workflow. If I click on this button slash link, it will open up the card in a full screen view over here. And that will let you see things that you won't see on the pop up like test coverage. If there is any, there aren't any tasks, attachments, history and other things, linking it to requirements and risks and things. So there's lots more options if you go to the full screen view, but you can always edit the key fields in the inline pop up. To add a new item is really easy. You click on the plus button. The plus button is now inside the segment and like it was before, because you're now adding it potentially to a row on a column. I'm going to hold off on doing that till we get to a few more things because I want to show you the rows. So right now we have components as components, as the group, columns of the status. What rows could I show? Well, I might want to show it by parent requirement, by epic. When I do that, instead of it showing all of the epics now, it's only going to show me the epics that are inside that component. So you can now see that whereas I had three cards before, now I still have three cards, but they're segmented by the epic, the parent requirement in Spira language that they belong to. So this is really nice. So I can now see each of these and I can see each of these inside of it. But I can now see it with the swim lanes by status. Previously you had rows or you had columns. Now you have rows and columns and groups. Now let's say I don't know which component things are in. You can always turn off the groups. Groups are optional. So if I just want to see all of the epics in a nice hierarchy, that's another option too. Then I don't have to worry about which component I'm in. And I can just literally expand out each of the sections like that. Notice that obviously there's a lot to expand and collapse. There are some shortcuts. If you hover the mouse over, you will see there's gray options here. The two are, the two greater than, less than, that means expand or collapse all, whereas the single one is expand or collapse is just the current thing. So that would expand and collapse the group and down here, this would expand and collapse everything in the group as well. So we've got different expand and collapse options. Oops, expanded everything. That was probably not a good idea. There we go. That's better because there's lots and lots of them. So I can now expand selectively. So there's always expand and collapse all, both at the group level and at the row level. We do not currently have the option to expand or collapse columns. Depending on feedback, we may add that back. We found that people weren't using it as much. We'll see. Okay, I noticed here that I've also, where you do have progress bars, you can see those inline nicely. And we do have a fading effect now to don't distract you until you hover the mouse over. So this is the product backlog. Let's say I want to add a new card. I want to add it to the data import functionality in this particular status. And I also want to add it to a particular group. So I'll put the grouping back. I can go in here, hit the plus button and that's going to pop up the option to create a story. Because it's inside a component, it's the component selected, because it's inside of a status that's selected and the parent is not listed visibly, but it will actually put it in that parent too. So this is a new feature of data import. So maybe it says, as a user, as a user, I want to be able to import from Google Sheets. Like that. I'm going to add that. There we go. And there it is. Easy, nice luck, nice and easy. If I want to prioritize that, I can either show it by priority or if I want to, I could even just assign it right here. So if the column isn't visible, you don't have to necessarily show it just to drag things. You can always edit it and there's now a red blob. Now these are all items that are not yet planned. So this, because this is the product backlog. So now let's now look at the release backlog. Release backlog is when we're now looking at what's in a release. When I do release backlog, it now gives us more options. First of all, there are more group by options. There's now the option of grouping by release or by team. Columns also show by person and rows will also show by person as well. So we've added more options to all three of the dropdowns. We've also got the option here to filter by release. If I choose all releases, then the board is going to show me everything that's planned for any release. And if I want to then break it down by release, I might do by release and I can now see if I collapse everything. These are my releases and sprints and phases and so on. Sorry, sprint, these are releases. We'll get to sprints in a minute. So I can now see everything that's inside a release. Expand release one. It's still being grouped by row. So it's going to show me all of the epics that are in that release. That's probably not too helpful. So I'll turn that off. Maybe we'll do it by component. That's a bit easier to manage. So I can now see for my release one, what functionality is being released that's administrative, that's author management or book management? Or that's got no assignment of component? Well, we should probably assign that to something. Let's give that a component. Create a book is book management. Hit save. Okay. So now you can see when I find things that don't match, I can easily edit them and put them into the right section. Nice. And I can see where this is on the board. Right now we've got status as my columns, component as my rows and I can see which release things are in. If I want to add something from my backlog into my release, that's also easy to do. I can go in here to say administration, look for anything. Oh, right. I need to turn off the status view though. So let's do it by priority. Okay. So these are my critical things. So there's nothing critical to be added in the backlog. Okay. There's something high though. So importing from Google Sheets is pretty high. So let's put that in the next release. I can look at release one. I can see what's ready in release one. There's a bunch of stuff here, but if I go over here to the right, I can look at the availability and see there's plenty of room in release one to put new items. So I'm not going to over schedule my release. That's good to know. So let me go ahead and drag that and let's drag that from the backlog. Oops. Click on in the background, not the title. And I'm going to drag that down here and put that into the administration release one. And that's done. So now that's moved from the backlog to the release and it's now planned. Status also changed from, I think it was accepted or requested to planned. It's now in the backlog. Perfect. Now there are no tasks or test cases. It's still pretty empty. If we go down to one of the other existing story cards in the release, they're a bit more interesting. So let's look at this one here. This one is completed. So that's why it's grayed out in that. This one is completed. So that's why it's grayed out in that kind of gray color. Um these other ones are not. If you look at the indicators, because we've everything turned on, we've now got some new designs. So first of all, we now show test coverage on the board. Previously, on the old planning board, we only showed you the list of test cases and the task programs. We've now standardized that. So for both for test cases, you will see the number of tests, which is the small number in parentheses. You will see the color, the cup, the progress bar that shows you what's the test coverage aggregate. How so? If it's all green, it's fully tested. If it's a mixture of greens and reds, then it's not tested or it's got some failures. This one has got a green, an orange and a gray. So that shows you that we've got some passes, some precautions and some not runs. And the little circles to the right, they will show you, oops, anyone actually click on it, it opens up the test case if you go back. Um that will show you in the three different circles, that will show you uh the three different test cases. So there's one test case, test case three, test case um three oh five and test case three oh four. The tool that will give you more information on the test case. And if you click or control click, it will open that test case in a full screen view. And if you hover the mouse over, you get the progress or coverage. If you go to the tasks, same thing. There are three tasks associated with it and they're all running late because they're all yellow and you can see the three tasks here. So we've consulted what they used to be separate little mini cards. Now they're little blobs because we found that they didn't need to be cards. They just had an ID. And now we do it in the tooltip rather than it being on the the display and it saves space and it's just a little bit cleaner. The number in gray, that is the story point count. That's the the circle is the priority and then the the certainly uh image of the person is the avatar. So that hasn't changed. So very similar to before, but now you've got, again, we've got these rows. We've got these columns and you can drag things between them. There was a bug in the old version where it wouldn't always correctly position things. That's all been fixed. And so now you've got this view to see everything and you can now see things like type and status that previously were not visible on the board in the card. Now, another thing we've done then, of course, is the teams and tracks. How does that play in? So for teams and tracks, if you go to grouping by team, I want to see, and I want to look at just one release at this point. So let's look at release one, let's group by team. I want the priority and I want the rows to be person. So before, when you, when you had lots of people, you had this massive set of columns or row, well, they weren't rows, massive set of columns of every single person on the project. There were two problems with this. First of all, many people on the project might be observers, they're not actively working on the team and they cluttered up the board. So it's very hard to move things. So you get like thirty, forty people and it's like drag, 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 pain in the neck. Or you could collapse, but it didn't fully collapse. So with teams, you can now say, we're going to have teams and they're going to have different people. So you can now say, let's look at my BA team. And guess what? Only two people or three, um very manageable. Let's look at my my dev team and you can as many teams as you like. But it lets you break the board down into manageable units of work and you can now also then have multiple columns. So I can see both Fred, but I can also see Fred and the priority of items. So Fred's got critical, high stuff, a lot of both actually. Whereas if I go up here to my uh say BA team, uh Joe's got critical and high. Actually, this is good. They're not working on low, low priority stuff. If I go by status though, I can now show by person by status. Again, one of the views we couldn't do before, you can now see what Fred's working on, plan, progress, develop, tested. Okay. There's a bunch of stuff he should be working on. He's got two things in planned, nothing's in progress. I should talk to Fred and see what's going on. Maybe he's busy somewhere else. And go up to Joe and nothing's, everything's completed. So nothing's actually been worked on. So you can see now, you can mix and match different columns and rows and see different ways of slicing and dicing the data. So basically what we've added with these boards is the ability to filter by the release and sprint. So I'm looking at all releases, the current release, or I'm looking at release, look at the sprints. Or if I want to be able to do things by person, I can do it by team and I can mix and match the filters. And the same thing is true with the sprint backlog. I can now do a sprint backlog. I can do it by team. I can see what that person is doing in all the sprints of that or a specific sprint. What's going on in 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 the particular sprint? And in that case, maybe I want to do it by team. Maybe uh like, there we go. There's Joe. He's got those two things. Perfect. Or I want to do it by sprint instead. In which case I'll typically want to do it by release. So now I can see the three releases in sprint one, sprint two and sprint three. And here's my release backlog and I can then drag and drop items from that into each sprint. And to do that, I'll probably want to turn off the rows. It's a bit easy to see it that way. So here's what's in release one. I've got this, these two things planned for my release. Let's look at sprint one. And like we saw with releases, if I go to the right, you can see the allocation of that. That's plenty of room in sprint one. Let's look at sprint two. Ooh, sprint two is not looking so good. We've over allocated it. Sprint three, that's good, no problem. So basically you can now see that I think sprint one is okay, but sprint two has been overscheduled. So I'll take these, this story from my release backlog and I'll dump that right here into the sprint. So that's how you can move things between releases and sprints very easily. So that's the new board functionality. Uh now I'm going to turn it over unless it's to Q and A. So let's see. Teresa, do you want to read them out or I can read them directly from? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Adam, so much for that uh presentation. Um so there's quite a few questions, a few related to the uh custom properties at the product level. But let's go ahead and start with the questions um about the planning board, which is where you're currently at.
Perfect, thanks.
There were a few uh questions about how the planning board uh functionality works within the workflows of uh a given artifact. So uh one question from Amber says, when you add an item from a planning board to an epic status, will the required fields set in the workflow show up in the edit pop up?
So the way the workflow, it works is if you click on the, if you're adding an item or clicking on the the edit link, the fields will be based on the workflow. So if you change a type, if you move it in the board, then click on the edit button. What's what's listed in bold is required, what's hidden, uh what's visible, that all does come from the workflow. So from a workflow step perspective, when you move it from one step to the other or change the type, which will change the workflow, any of those things will change what's required, what's hidden and what's disabled. The one thing that's not done by the workflow is the transition. So when transitions exist, like I, in the workflow, I can only move from one status to the other. Um that does not follow the workflow. It's too complicated because you can drag and drop between so many different permutations. So for that reason, dragging and dropping items on the board requires the bulk edit permissions, which lets you override workflow transitions. There is an option to turn that off if users don't want people to ever be able to do that in the planning options. And so typically, um the editing of items respects the workflow, but the moving of items between statuses specifically does not require workflow because it gets too complicated because there's too many permutations to be able to do that. So that's what does and does not respect the workflow.
Excellent. That that addressed another question from GUI as well.
Okay.
Adam, uh back to the uh test coverage that appears in the uh in the cards. A question was, will the test coverage so show test sets or just test cases?
Just test cases. A test case links to a requirement. A test set does not link to a requirement. Um so if you create a test, there's an option in the tool to create a test set from a requirement. That creates a test case, populate it with multiple tests. Create a test set, populate it with multiple test cases, but then links the test cases back to the requirement. The links are always from the requirement to the test case. So it's only going to show you the test case coverage on the this particular board because it is a requirements driven board. Now, there is some future functionality we're thinking about uh to maybe add a have a test case board, maybe even a test set board. Those will be separate boards um using this new design. Uh those would then be able to do some of what you're asking. But right now on the requirements cards, it is specifically test case coverage.
Excellent. Um and then quickly, a question came up about teams, though I think you you answered it shortly thereafter.
Okay.
It uh, the question is, can a single user be assigned to one or more teams?
A single user is can it can only be the member of its, can only be a member of a team, a single team in a product. And that's to avoid duplicating in the board. Uh you can be on team A in product one and team B in product two. But in the context of a single product, it is your only member of a single team currently anyway.
Uh excellent. Um so that was the questions on the planning functionality. There were a couple of questions about um the custom properties.
Okay.
At the product level and
Okay.
It's going to speak to what kind of what our roadmap thinking is.
Yep.
Um so GUI asks, um can you uh use those custom properties at the product level to create portfolio demand management view to consolidate demand requests?
So yes and no. So with the current functionality, what you can do is if you go to that program view, uh let's say, get a sample program. And if you go to the, uh not the board, but the products, we are, you can go here and see, look, here's my future product. So you could create a new product. Um and that would be something that's going to be in for a new demand. A new demand is, we want to do, um you know, let's say chat based banking. We want to use chat G P T and we wanted to do that to be able to respond to banking requests. It's a whole new idea. Doesn't exist yet. In the current spiral, what you would need to do is you would need to basically go in here and create a new product. And you could then use the attributes to create a status field like, is it, you know, is it, is it active product or not active? Um perhaps it might be, you know, ideas versus, you know, currently running. Maybe you categorize it by chat versus the AI versus whatever it is. So you could create effectively empty products and tag them with these various fields and you could definitely do that to manage demand. I think that so though that's not the primary reason we built that functionality, but you can definitely do use the use that. Now what's coming in twenty twenty three, which may be a better way of doing it. So again, there's always different ways of doing things, but a better way. And exactly what you said, Teresa, about scaled agile, we're going to be adding in the new year. Uh and I, and that doesn't mean January, when the new year in the in the duration of twenty twenty three, uh sign will kill me. Um we're going to be adding um requirements at the program level and requirements at the portfolio level. And there'll be boards and grids to go with them. And these were, the current naming is being worked out. We think we're going to be calling them capabilities at the program level and strategic objectives at the portfolio level. And so what will happen is a program capability, which which will be like a requirement, you would create those at the at the portfolio, at the program level. You can even have strategic objectives at the portfolio level. You would create those and then you map those to requirements in products. And so new demands would effectively be a new either program or portfolio level requirement, whether it's capability or strategic objective. And then, once you're ready to fulfill that, you could then instantiate a new product, add detailed product level requirements, feature stories, epics and map those up to the parent item. So for example, if, for example, being the number one bank in AI based banking was our strategic objective at the portfolio level, we might have a program that might be web based chat using an AI bot like chat G P T. And in our mobile banking program, we might have a, you know, mobile chat application. And then each of the products would have a, you know, iOS banking app would be one product and Android banking would be another one. So you'd have strategic objective requirement uh being number one in on in AI based banking. In the program for mobile banking, we would have the program capability to do chat in the mobile apps. And then in each of the two products, we'd have multiple user stories most likely to handle all the functionality that would go into that in each of our two different mobile platforms. So you've now got one key, one objective with maybe one or two capabilities that links to hundreds and hundreds potential stories and features at the system level. So that's the vision of where we're going with the with the agile functionality. And that would probably be a better, longer term way to do demand management. But certainly in the current version, using effectively empty products would be fine and that would not conflict with the future. Because in the future, you would be managing with these programmed artifacts and you still instantiate it as a new product at some point. So it would be completely in line with that. You'd just be doing it a little bit further down the lifecycle effectively, uh the demand part. Hopefully that helps answer the question.
Yes, thanks, Adam. Um just one more question too. I think that uh more speaks to uh the vision of of where Spire Plan uh will put us in the future. Um GUI asks, can you view resource allocation at a portfolio level?
A same thing, that is not currently available. Uh at the portfolio levels, if you've used the system, you can obviously look at uh progress. So if I went to core services, I can see what is the progress of the features at this level. And with the new scaled agile, you'll be able to see program, sorry, this portfolio, portfolio of strategic objectives. You'll be able to see those as well on this board view, uh sorry, dashboard view. So you can see, I've got ten strategic objectives this year. How how are we doing against them? So right now I can look at my portfolios and programs and see, well, in this portfolio, I've got two programs. Are they ahead? Are they behind? I can't, I don't know which of these two is more important. What this new functionality will they do is see which is more important, what's more important. And I'll be tracking against the more important ones. That's the new functionality. And then beyond that, the vision is then to use a combination of teams and tracks and the new portfolio functionality and program functionality to do resource tracking. Because now that we have teams, you'll be able to say, well, I've got a BAT, my BA, my BA teams, my um dev teams, what's my utilization of them? Um across the different programs and portfolios. So we're sort of closing in on that functionality from both ends, from the scaled agile up and from the the teams and tracks down. But we're not, we're not there yet. It doesn't yet exist.
Uh excellent. So that concludes the the questions that have currently been submitted. I must say, I'm I'm super excited about um the engagement with the folks, especially with the new beta planning board functionality. Um so I'm looking forward to hearing more feedback as as folks get in there and and turn on that beta functionality and play with it and and provide us some feedback as as you had demonstrated, um it's available in app.
Great. Well, thank you so much and uh appreciate the people attending today. Oh, actually, one question I think just came in chat. I just saw it, sorry. Will the new plan, with the new planning board view, when teams are created for ease of view, will the out of the box reporting updated to show the time of each status within the teams? Um currently that the teams are only in the boards, they're not in the reporting yet. Uh once this comes out of beta, we'll be adding more integration with teams elsewhere. So no is the short is the current answer. Um that's certainly part of the vision is that you'll be able to do more things with teams like assigning a defect to a team before then sub assigning it to a person, which you can't do. Things like that are all part of the way teams will go. Uh boards is the highest priority use of teams, but the intention is that teams will be more broadly available for filtering and sorting and assignment um as we add build out that part of the system. So yeah, sorry. Thanks, Teresa, and thank for moderating and thanks everyone for attending. Uh for those who couldn't make it, there's an afternoon session. We'll be covering the same thing. Also, I believe we're making a recording available on our website on a YouTube channel as well. So have a great uh Tuesday and uh thanks so much for attending and I'll see you in a future webinar.